Good evening. The meeting and public hearing for the Falls Church Planning Commission on the 18th of May 2015 is now in session. Ms. Teed, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Ms. Teeds?
Here.
Ms. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Wodisca?
Here.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Meeks and Mr. Dujan are absent this evening.
We're shaking it up tonight.
Thank you. I'd like to call for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do I have a ... All those in favor, can I please say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed?
It's like a trial.
No, the motion carries. The next item is the receiving ... the receipt of petitions from the public. I have one speaker slip, Mr. Keith Thurston.
Items that are on the agenda? Yes, items that are not.
Yeah, this is for items that are not on the agenda. Mr. Thurston, could you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Keith Thurston. I live at 1015 Birch Street, and I'm here tonight speaking for the Village Preservation and Improvement Society. In your package, where it's distributed this week, the five environmental goals that the Village Society put forward in concert with the Environmental Services Council. This report was initially developed in 2009 and established these goals, and this is a five-year report, catch-up on progress on each of these, and also more clarifying some of the metrics itself. We worked with the Tree Commission, the Environmental Services Council, and we're still working with city staff on the area of solid waste. So the five areas that are in there generally are tree canopy, which is challenging in this environment because, as you know, when we build out large houses, small lots, it reduces the amount of space for trees, and the canopy area is more difficult. But we're still saying that we need to maintain and increase the tree canopy that we have, especially that we're entering into warmer stages and possible climate change. And in the course, in the commercial district, where we have the buildings going almost to the lot lines, then all it really leaves is street trees. And when you consider that balance in the city, maintaining the same percentage and gaining canopy cover is something we all have to work with together. The second one was increased residential recycling. We're working with staff on solid waste, on ways that we might be able to do that. Third is reducing greenhouse gases. Fourth is increased green surfaces, green roofs, and the ratios on residential lots. And then the fifth is promote building standards. All of those were in there. We've made progress, and some of them have gotten two stars, three stars of progress. A couple of them, not so much. But we bring this to your attention in hopes that we'll work with you as time goes on, as development comes through, to try to accomplish some of these goals and make them real for the city. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Yes.
I have a question. I have a question, Mr. Thurston. Is this something that the Village Preservation Improvement Society is trying to get the city to approve or include in its processes?
Those are the next steps. So the Environmental Services Council has adopted, they support it. The Tree Commission has adopted the tree canopy one in here, and they tweaked it in order to make it what they would like to see as well, and the Village Society agreed with that. Then we have to go through the steps of working with Planning Commission and the council to get this into guidance and code so that we can actually gain these accomplishments. Right now, it's based on the goodwill of everybody and hoping people remember certain things as development comes through.
Right. So I guess my next question to follow up on this is, I've read this, and there are several things that I'd like to emphasize as we go through the planning process. How can we, how can we, as planning commissioners or as a planning commission, help? Help you get, reach our five environmental goals?
So I believe the best that we're going to be able to do is to look at these goals and compare them to the city code and see what parts of code most apply to these. And then will we be reminding you either that we need to enhance the code in certain areas or give additional credits for accomplishing certain things? So for instance, leads and lead silver. Right now, there's no mandatory requirement for doing leads, and we have city projects going through. While the American Planning Association and other groups say that it's pretty hard to ask from developers coming into the city to make their buildings leads gold or silver when you're not even doing it for your own projects that the city builds. So we're going to say that we believe that all city projects should be lead gold. That is the minimum we could do if we're asking the developers to come in and asking them for silver. You have to set the standard yourself and your own accomplishments. So it's those types of things will come back to you and say, we think these piece of code need to be changed.
And that's the city, the planning commission could participate in maybe having a workshop, a work session, or some kind of a community meeting, something to help get some of these goals on, either in our code or in our proffers. I know that we've now added something to our voluntary concessions that has to do with leads. I don't know if it's, I don't think it's gold, Keith, but I, but I know it has to do with leads.
Yes, typically on commercial projects, we've been asking development to meet silver lead standard minimum. I would say that this is a very nice piece of work put together by the Preservation Improvement Society, and we have been talking and would like to find time to develop with planning commission's help and other commissions' help, a chapter in the comp plan on sustainability that would include these kinds of goals, and also financial sustainability, which I know is another, another piece of this. So Lauren Bruce has been doing some research on this and has particular interest in this. I don't have a specific timetable for this, but as a goal, I think it would be useful for us to work towards having a chapter in the comprehensive plan on sustainability, environmental, as well as financial. These are important goals. Regionally, planning directors have been working on some similar things. So there are a lot of pieces, I think, that can come together. Plus, the, you know, we're trying to de-emphasize the automobile. Plans we're working on are trying to create more green space and better streets with, you know, more green amenities as a part of particularly street trees. So I think this is a very nice piece of work. Commend Vipas for putting it together, and I think a lot of these ideas, we would hope to, with the commission's help, eventually put into comp plan chapter on sustainability for the city.
Yeah, I just think it would be beneficial for us to, to look at it and, and maybe recommend to city councils, something to the city council. Of course, we can't do it right this minute, but a work session on it would be helpful.
If I could add on the issue, on some of these goals, it would be helpful at the, at the regional level because COG put out a report in 2014, and they named the jurisdictions about tree canopy cover, and they said that the city of Falls Church did not have any goal setting for tree canopy cover. And we thought, well, maybe they're informal, maybe they weren't adopted by the council. So maybe if something does, we'll get off of that list and show up as having a standard for tree canopy, like the other jurisdictions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from the ... Any other member of the ... Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Thurston. Any other member of the public wish to speak on something that's not on the agenda? Okay. Moving on then to the next item of business, which is old business, of which I see we have none. So let's move on to item number six, new business, which is a public hearing on the bicycle master plan connecting communities. Will we be receiving a presentation on this item?
Yes, you will, but I might, if I could ask your indulgence, Mr. Chairman. We did this past week, have a presentation from the Urban Land Institute Leadership Group, who did what's called a mini technical assistance panel study, and this was an outgrowth of the work they did for us on the school city property. They looked at the Gordon Road Triangle. I think a number of you were invited. They put together a very good report, and if you, if, I would like, if we have a few minutes, Lauren Bruce can take us through that, just to bring you up to speed, and also publicly take a quick look at this, rather than doing this after the bicycle plan, if that's okay?
It's okay with me. Do we need to, I was going to say, do we need to make a quick adjustment to the agenda? Do I have a motion to alter the agenda to include the presentation by Mr. Bruce?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we add the Wood Road Triangle item to our agenda. Would that be under old business, or would that be under new business?
I think it's under new business, if that's okay.
Under new business as item A.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
And this was done at no cost to the city, and it provides some interesting perspectives and looks at an important area of the city.
Anyone opposed? All right, then let's hear your presentation. Mr. Bruce?
I'll keep this short, because each of you received the PowerPoint or PDF in the email, and, but it was interesting. As you know, with ULI, TAP stands for Technical Assistance Panel, and there's two types. There's the type we had when they did the school project, and that's the full deal. This is a mini TAP made up of beginners, kind of in the field, and they're interdisciplinary. They're, they were made up, we had, I think, five or six on the panel led by Eric Soder, who was a former planning director for the city of Frederick, Maryland. Is that correct, Jim?
Frederick County, I believe, Maryland.
Okay. Frederick County, and, and he works for Rogers now, which is a plant, as a urban land planner. But we had somebody from Womata, we had somebody from the American Transportation Association and that kind of thing. And then what they do is they meet monthly, they work on this for about six months, just individually on their own time, and so it's not as in-depth, and they missed a few things that I think they missed, but they got a lot of things right, and it was, it was good. So let me just hop through it. That's a good picture of the Gordon Triangle you're familiar with, West Broad and the WNOD. This is the desire to keep the public work functions and somehow maybe develop a relationship with the buyer family who's kind of experiencing a lot of pressure from Fairfax County regarding their, their parking. Maybe we could create a parking deck, put, put certain vehicles and certain supplies under, under the deck. So anyway, this is, this is what we're looking at for the next 20 years.
The red area there was the newly added land to the city that's the property yard that was in Fairfax County, but now is in the city.
And as you can see, the blue area, some of which is in Falls Church and some of which is in Fairfax, is the buyer family, and they are purchasing quite a few pieces of property. So they're assembling a good chunk of this to eventually see a redevelopment. The market study was probably, in my opinion, was one of the weaker points. They really didn't do a true market study. They just relied on some other reports, but that shows you the changing demographics and what's going to happen. And as we know, it's, it's the Gen X, millennials, and empty nesters, you know, that provide opportunities for home buyers. A certain percentage, obviously with children, are going to want to have single lot, single detached homes and that kind of thing. But senior living and continuous care is obviously a big issue for Falls Church, and we all know that. I'll skip over the residential market. They, they kind of said, here's, here's what you could probably charge. They referred to the Harris Teeter project showing mixed, mixed development, you know, residential above, retail below, that kind of thing. And then, in spite of strong retail performance in Falls Church at the moment, they were saying, you're going to quickly absorb your demand and end up with an oversupply. So that's the part I probably disagree with the most. I think they're being way too conservative on, on that part. They're concerned about the type of retail that might come in if you hit oversupply, vacancies, reduced rent, undesirable attendance, you know, mattress world or, or whatever. Not that we don't need frame shops, but, you know, in terms of tax revenue, that's not.
Whoa.
Yeah, yeah, I know. But they, the trouble is, the one weakness, I think, was that nobody that was part of the mini TAP was from Virginia. They all were from Maryland or DC, and they weren't as familiar with what's going on in the little city, okay? Ground floor opportunities, obviously the buyers, and the whole, it's very fascinating what's happening to the automobile industry in the next 20 years, what they're predicting. You've seen it in the mall with Tesla, where you go in and there's maybe a car you sit in, and then maybe two, maybe two cars you go test drive, and the rest of the time you're going to be on the computer designing your car. So they don't need to keep hundreds of cars on the lot. They can, when somebody orders them, they can bring them in. So, you know, that's, it's going to be interesting to see where we go. But we're talking about doctors' offices, architecture, daycare, and we got a, a great opportunity with a new applicant that looks like he's going to submit to open an, his architecture building firm in McLean and move it to Falls Church. But I think the, the point here is they're missing the importance of hotels. They don't understand that at the moment, Hilton Garden Inn, for example, it's just raised their rates by about $100 a night. They're already booked. They're booked solid through the fall. So, you know, there's definitely a shortage there, but we want good retail, good restaurants, opportunities for medical offices. Jim can talk about the Anova folks checking out our area. And then medical office and senior housing, they used a case study in Houston, Texas, which is somewhat instructive, but, you know, we're between Anova and Arlington Hospital, so, you know, we're not, we're not right on where they are looking at. The American Transportation gentleman, Darnell, talked about things that Paul's going to refer to, about bike share, what makes, what we can do to improve walkability, have complete streets, you know, a lot of the things that you guys have been dealing with. Transportation and walkability enhancements because of our proximity to Womata. And then, so here's the walk shed area, and a good chunk of, of the Gordon Triangle is right, is right there. So, you know, they, we spent a little bit of time on walk scores, walk sheds, complete streets. And then here's their conceptual land plan. So that's your triangle there, the existing conditions, which is dominated primarily by auto service, light industrial, U-Haul, you know, that kind of thing. But we, we could do a much better job tying into WNOD. They want to create more blocks with more entrances in and out, and maintain the property that the city uses at the bottom of the picture there, and improve that. So there's the, the storage yard, perhaps a covered garage in, that we would build or, or do in conjunction with the buyers. Joint parking garage, a new DPW administrative building, flex use, a new service center for Don Byer.
And I think the key thing here is, the city in the past had been exploring whether or not we should go purchase land outside the city for a property yard that we needed more space. I think in this scheme, they're showing that there is room, probably, to have the facilities. We may need to build some buildings to house them. Many of them are on the surface or on open lots, and, and parking, which is on, you know, surface only right now, having some kind of a structure would be a lot more efficient. Possibly it could be a shared parking structure. So I think what this is, and a different road arrangement could make that more, more doable.
Yeah, because the way that ...
This is part of, one of the key pieces of this. We were hoping to get some input about the property that we own and how can that best be used in it.
Because the way the property is now on that side is the parking lot on, you know, Shreve is almost like a separate entity, and it could be combined better if it was, you know?
Yes.
Right.
Absolutely.
And so it could use better. But I also kind of think, I hope that we keep an eye on the concrete factory, because if that was ever decided not to be there, we should grab it because it's industrial now, we have a better chance of keeping it for a property. Where any other property near there, Fairfax is going to want, it's, you know, they want that low density housing, so. I mean, I don't know if they have any intention of ever leaving, but you never know with industrial uses.
Eventually, they do. I mean, it's, there used to be one at East Falls Church where the fire station is.
Right.
And there were some in Crystal City that are now a, a big regional park for the county. There's still one in Shurlington. They, they can last a long time, but eventually they may go.
Yeah, I just, you know, I hope we are keeping, like, talking with them and just saying, if you get done, come to us first, because that would be the perfect thing, is to have that property, too.
Yes.
But within recent years, in the last couple of years, there was an extensive study on where else to put the property yard. And it was not a, a productive, I mean, it was just no gamer.
No, I think you're right, there wasn't, but I, that's why, but one of the things is at the time, the concrete factory was for sure not anywhere close to being on the market, and I just think that's one of the few places near the city we could possibly grab if it ever came on the market.
So I guess the, the key piece here is there probably is room to house the functions we have. We may have to invest in some buildings and some parking structures. There may be opportunities to share some of that space with other users who have a lot of surface lots now. And so this is a broad outline showing that potential, but I think this is one of the key recommendations or outcomes of this that's of value to us is that we, and, you know, that this might be a possibility, along with, as Commissioner Teeds has mentioned, can other properties nearby eventually be put together and put to a better use than they are presently? Anyway, sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's perfect. And like, there were, you know, the discussion broadened beyond just these PowerPoint slides. But obviously, you're trying to break it up into smaller blocks, make it easier for walkability. Now, the challenge is going to be, how do you get from the property yard through this residential mixed-use development with retail and restaurants to seven? And so we were talking, they were suggesting, for example, that if you're going to have a storage area for salt, sand, gravel, whatever, that a forklift can get in and load, load your trucks in the winter, why not make it look like a train station, for example? So I thought that was pretty creative. And I, and so here's our, what they thought would be best in terms of a ground floor retail along this strip. Now, obviously, the school property is going to develop first. This is not going to preempt what's going to happen in terms of the 10 acres that we have at the school property. So this is just further, you know, we were just batting around, where, where should the retail go? Again, a little bit conservative on, on, in my opinion, but...
You'll notice the attempt to line up Birch Street across Broad Street, which it presently does not do. Presently, Birch Street comes to Broad Street and hits it on the southern end and does not continue across. This suggests the idea of possibly creating a connector there someday so that that would line up with Birch Street on the north side of Broad. I think that's another key, key thought here.
But if you get 25 trucks taking salt out to Route 7, you know, you're going right through a area you want to redevelop with some high-class development. Short-term opportunities, interior site. We talked about, you know, what's longer term, what's shorter term, pedestrian linkages. And this is what we want to sit down with Supervisor Smith about in terms of what she's thinking in terms of Fairfax County. If we can improve that street with wider sidewalks, trees, plantings, whatever, it might be the kind of buffer that, that would work with the single detached residential units that's primarily in her district. But again, trying to enhance pedestrian linkage across. Traffic control, we talked a little bit about that, and Mike from Department of Public Works was there. Notice the little green arrow, or the green part hooking up with the WNOD. That park could be a wider, bigger park. But again, linking the residents here with the WNOD, and also the WNOD could cut through and have easier access to this side of West Broad Street. So the overall land plan, they, they came up with, you know, when they put all the pieces together, it looks something like this. And again, this is just one rendering. They did an analysis of each land bay and what's available, what could happen. The tippy point of the triangle, they, they're recommending as, as a park, for example, if that works. And the summary of recommendations, they got a little bit of, a mystic point where you can annex land. They, we're not going to be annexing anything from Fairfax County, so they missed that one.
That's the number one issue on this side of Washington.
No, I don't think so either.
I don't think, you know, the number one thing.
But, you know, improved plans for a more of a street grid, a network, and rezoning, consolidating and covering the yard storage for public works, identifying shared parking garage sites, and then identifying street scape, pedestrian, and open park improvements. And that's it.
Thank you, Lauren. Appreciate your time and take a look at this. We hope that longer term, this will be of value as we study that area.
Lauren?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Do you want me to go back?
No, I have two, no. I have two, I have two questions.
Okay.
One, these parcels from this particular slide.
Okay.
These are all...
Are you on the page that says overall land plan?
It doesn't say what it is. It just has A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H.
Oh, okay.
These parcels currently are all zoned commercial business, business in some point, right?
Zoned industrial.
Zoned industrial, okay. But that's kind of a business designation.
Yes, it has limitations and...
Why would we take all of those zone properties, zone commercial properties, and change them into mixed-use residential?
They were recommending that that's the highest and best use of the land, and in terms of the land value, as opposed to what's on top of it now. But this is just an idea. This is just one group's opinion.
I mean, it just seems to me that we're always trying to get commercial in. We've got something that's already zoned commercial. It's all commercial now, there's, it's all kinds of little businesses. So why, you know, why would we switch it over to residential? I just asked that, okay. Now, the next, my next question is... Now, the next, my next question is, what are we going to do with this? What, this isn't something that's going to go into our comp plan, I hope.
No, it's, it's information. When we get to that part of the city and start looking at it, there were other studies that have been done as well. So it's, it's information.
Okay.
And we can use it or not. I think one of the key pieces that you get out of this is perhaps changes to the road network and that we probably can handle, if we're, if we work collaboratively, we can handle our public works and public service needs on property we own if we work with our adjoining, with adjoining property owners. Those are two very important things. I think the idea of retail along Broad Street is an important idea and it would work with the retail across the street on the north side of Broad Street. In terms of the broader land uses, those are the purview of the Planning Commission, City Council, and a broader study. And frankly, we probably do need to do a more detailed market study for the city in terms of, you know, what's the demand for property in Greater Falls Church in terms of retail? That hasn't been done. So those are, those are the key things I take away from this is-
Well, I like the, the street grid that they've done and, but, but I see that as a whole bunch of little shops that serve the city for people to actually shop in without residential. I mean, I don't think we need any more residential up there.
Well, that's certainly a possibility.
We're going to get some huge residential supposedly in the school property. Anyway, as long as we're not approving this or recommending it to City Council, because I, you know, I think it has a lot of problems, to tell you the truth.
It's, it's just a study.
Yeah.
I do think one of our main interests was to see what kind of thoughts there might be with property yards and the adjoining property and-
And the property yard is an important thing. We have to do something there, yeah.
Very important for us because we need to plan that area. And so I think that was a key thing, is the road network, treatment of Broad Street, integration with WNOD. Broader land uses is another topic.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I would hate to have anybody think that this is a plan in action because it's really so rudimentary. And, you know, and whenever we get things presented in public, you know, it sounds like, oh, this is what they're going to be doing. And, you know, this is, I say this is a surface scratcher and I, you know, but I still always say, and as Melissa always says, "Go look at the Holmes Plan again." That is, do you have a copy of that?
We do, and I believe they were supplied copies as well.
Yeah.
Any other comments from Commissioners? Ms. Bruce, thank you very much for your presentation. So let's move on to the next item on the agenda, item 6B, the public hearing on the bicycle master plan. We are going to have a presentation from Mr. Stoddard.
Thank you very much, members of the Planning Commission. So I'm coming to you tonight to provide a presentation. Hopefully you all will hold a public hearing and then take an action on this draft bicycle master plan for the city. In your package, there are a number of items and I just want to walk through because some got added at the dais tonight. Did those get distributed? Okay. So additionally, some items were distributed at the dais, so I just want to catch you up and make sure you know what everything is for you. First is the staff report with a proposed motion for a recommendation to City Council. That staff report describes some of the background that's been going on, including the, including the, the sort of upcoming timeline with the Planning Commission scheduled to take an action here tonight, going to the City Council in a work session June 15, and then hopefully council action on June 22. This also highlights some of the previous public meetings that were taken, including the Planning Commission's work session on this item March 16. For your, yep, for your ease of navigating the document, there's a memo with today's date on it, May 18, addressed from me, Paul, to Chair Meeks and members of the Planning Commission. This memo, which was handed out at the dais, describes the major changes that occurred in the plan since it was last brought to the Planning Commission, major text changes, additional routes being added, additional regional information like Fairfax County's proposed bike routes, guidance on bike share, bike share corridors, and so on. Also attached to that memo or attachments are a couple of new maps. Those are map changes that were made subsequent to the distribution of the package for tonight's meeting. Those changes were based on comments received at last Wednesday's public open house, as well as the CACT meeting following thereafter. Included in there are the maps, some small changes to some additional information in the implementation section that speaks to remaining flexible to the plan goals as conditions change in the city, taking advantage of all outside opportunities that present themselves, and also for reference, the CACT's motion recommending the plan. And then also attached is the ESC, the Environmental Services Council, letter recommending adoption of the plan. And so with that, I actually want to launch into the presentation. Now, some of this stuff is, is information that the Planning Commission's seen before. I'll move over that fairly quickly. Information that's new, since that March work session, I'll, I'll spend a little bit more time on. So why a bicycle master plan? This is information the Planning Commission has seen before. There's a growing demand for biking nationally, regionally, and locally, and so there's a lot of latent demand. There's a demand for bike facilities and safe bicycle access, but the existing facilities don't provide that. And I'll talk a little bit about that latent demand in the later slides with results from the public survey. There are a number of benefits that come along with promoting and allowing and enabling bicycle travel. Economic benefits in terms of private saving costs, reducing auto use, public savings costs, not having to provide for automobiles, which is a very expensive endeavor for the public. Environmental benefits, this can be both on the private side, the public health side, getting regular daily exercise, but also public benefits in terms of air quality, reduced energy use, and then social equity. Bicycling is something that's available to everyone. People get an increased sense of independence when they have multiple travel options available and they're not dependent on someone else. This is especially true for youth in the United States today who are often dependent on other people for travel until they can get a driver's license. Also, there's a timing aspect to this planning effort, and that's one of the reasons for moving the plan on the schedule it's on. VDOT, the Virginia Department of Transportation, is advancing its own regional bike planning effort. They're expecting to wrap up their effort in September or October of this year, so there's an interest in getting the city's plans on the books so that that can appropriately feed into that state-led effort. So agenda for the presentation, motivating bicycle master plan, which I just spoke about. I'll talk a little bit about a master plan, which is old hat for the Planning Commission, but maybe new for some of the people watching. Then I'll talk about the planning process that was used to get to this point, and then I'll quickly go over some of the planned elements, especially the ones that have changed. And then we'll have time for question and answer. So what is a master plan? A master plan is something that fits into a coordinated effort with the other plans within the city, and it speaks to a specific element. So where the, the comprehensive plan speaks generally to, these are the city's goals, it then lays out specific steps about how do we achieve that overall vision. And so Mobility for All Modes was the comprehensive plan for transportation in the city, and it explicitly called for adopting a bicycle master plan, and it laid out specific goals, and I'll include that vision statement in a later slide. And then each master plan will have a specific set of contents that you'll typically see. It'll lay out existing conditions and planning context, policy goals that the city is trying to achieve, the future conditions that would realize those goals, and then the implementation strategy for getting from the existing conditions to the proposed future conditions. Planning process, there was a kickoff in March with the Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation, the Planning Commission, then a plan development phase through March and April, May, and now we're starting that approval process. CACT recommended it last week, Planning Commission tonight is the recommended motion, and then City Council action in June. So vision, providing travel choices. I spoke just two slides ago about the comprehensive plan, Mobility for All Modes, and that plan does include a vision statement to provide for the safe movement of people and goods within and through the city via a transportation network that connects to the regional transportation network, offers choices and travel modes, supports economic activity, is sensitive to the environment, and provides equitable access for all city residents, workers, and visitors. As part of that plan, there was a specific goal to adopt a bicycle facilities plan, a bicycle master plan. And the Mobility for All Modes plan actually specified the vision, the goal for that, for that bicycle master plan, which is to provide a network of bicycle routes that connects the city's commercial areas and neighborhoods, transit facilities, schools, regional bicycle facilities, and designated bicycle routes in neighboring jurisdictions. This statement is really a catch-all, and this was developed through the public engagement process for Mobility for All Modes. There was a, there was a desire from people who participated in that effort to provide biking not just for a few people, but for everyone. Biking isn't just about going to transit, isn't just about getting to work. It's not just about going to school. It can be about visiting your friends, it can be about running errands, it can be just having a nice time out in the open air. And the survey results will show that there's a real demand in the city for all of those options and opportunities. So to assess the desire in the community for biking, the city staff launched a survey that was opened from April 22 to May 10. City received a total of 304 responses. One of the first questions, the first question asked in the, in the survey was, "What kind of rider are you today?" And these four categories were described in more detail in the survey, but they break down as follows. Strong and fearless are people, in some situations, it is me. Those were people who will bike in any sort of condition, and sometimes I'm in this category that I bike to work once a day, or once a week, sorry, and the route that works best for me is actually to go along North Washington for a couple of blocks, that that's the most direct route I have from where I'm starting, from where I'm trying to go. So there are the strong and fearless, but that's not most of the bikers in the city. Most of the bikers in the city are in that enthused and confident section, and those are the people who bike today, but only where they feel safe doing so where there are safe facilities provided, whether that's sort of a slow-speed neighborhood street or it's an off-street trail, something like the WNOD. There's then a large portion out there in the community that is interested but concerned. Those are people who don't bike today, but they would like to bike, but they don't feel safe doing so. And this is really where sort of the planning aspects and the equity aspects come in, that there's a transportation environment that isn't meeting the stated desires of members of the community. And then there's the no way, no how group, and it's important to keep these folks in mind. These are people that don't bike today and they don't want to bike tomorrow. And that's okay, because if you go back to that vision statement for Mobility for All Modes, it's all about providing choices. It's not about making people do things, it's about giving them the option to do what they want. So the survey then went on and asked a number of questions about, "What are your biking habits today and what would you like your bike habits to be in the future?" And it talked about different kinds of trips. So there was exercise and health and recreation sort of go together, and these choices were broken down very frequently. That was sort of five to 10 times a month. Frequently was up to five times a month, sort of a, maybe once a week. Sometimes a few weeks, maybe two or three times a month. Rarely was, maybe I do it this month, maybe not next month, and then never was, I don't bike at all. And what these charts show, the blue is existing biking habits and red is desired biking habits. And so among the survey participants, there was a real desire to do these kinds of trips more often than they're doing now. And that's a similar trend that plays out across different trip types. So here it's running errands and visiting friends and relatives. These are sort of the everyday things. These are really the meat and potatoes of transportation. People talk about sort of trips to work, but that's really only 15% of all trips. So that other 85% is things like this. This is the real bulk of people's travel. And there's a real desire here. People are very rarely using these item, using bikes for transportation today for these, for these things, but they would like to do that much more so in the future. And then there's biking for careers. As I mentioned, biking to work, which is always an important thing, that's when the crunch comes down on the transportation infrastructure. And you can see the number of people who don't bike to work today or to school today is somewhere in that 64 to 74% range, so it's even off the, off the chart on the scale. But a lot of those people would actually like to work and they'd actually like to do so with some frequency. Demographics, is this survey representative of the population? It's not a scientific survey. There were 304 responses. One thing that staff did to gauge how representative was this is we matched it up against some of the reported demographic information in the Census Bureau. If you look at the chart on the left, that's the age of survey respondents. Blue is the reported age, red is the age as identified in the census data. By percentage, it actually comes out pretty close. There were a few groups over-reported, a few groups under-reported. Similarly, gender was pretty well matched up. Blue is the reported by survey takers, and then red is what's reported in the, in the census. So while it's not scientific, I think the demographics do show that the survey reached out to all age groups and all genders. Geographic distribution, there's also a question of, did the survey responses only come from a few neighborhoods? We went, staff went back and charted the survey responses. As part of the survey, we asked, "What's the nearest intersection to your home?" And so what this chart is mapping is those intersections that were reported and then people's biker type, whether they were the strong and fearless, the enthused and confident, the no way, no hows. What this map shows is that all kinds of biker types are distributed throughout all neighborhoods in the city. So this isn't a one neighborhood thing versus another neighborhood thing. This is, this is a citywide interest in this biking infrastructure.
Awesome.
Yes.
But it does show which intersections along Broad are affected, which is, I think, any feeder into any of those intersections along Broad, it's very, very important.
That's a good observation, yeah. Yeah, it certainly shows where the sort of concentration of responses was.
Where people be crossing.
So now we're jumping into, so that was sort of the background and the context for the planning effort. Now it's into sort of the, the functional aspects of the plan. These are the existing identified routes that are, that are in the comprehensive plan for the city, the WNOD trail, the circumnavigation through the residential neighborhoods, and then the charrod routes along Maple Avenue and Park Avenue. Putting the city's routes in the regional context today, the red dots represent identified regional activity centers by the Council of Governments. Activity centers are concentrations of economic activity and commercial activity that are identified as sort of hubs for future development within the region. The, if you look at the Arlington County side of the map, you'll see that they've got a more built-up, more complete network of bicycle routes connecting into the activity centers in the Ross and Boston Corridor, looking westward. Fairfax County has, is standing up Tyson's Corner with their activity centers, but not many routes connecting it today. That's in contrast to what those two communities are planning for the future. Arlington County is planning to sort of flesh out the rest of their skeletal structure. Fairfax County is planning to stand up an entire structure that spreads across, spreads across their entire county. And what this map really helps to show, those two sort of buffer circle balloon shapes, that's a two and a half mile buffer from the city border and a five mile buffer from the city border. And traveling at 10 miles an hour on a bike, which is possible with adequate facilities and a fairly direct route, in the future, many of the activity centers in the Northern Virginia region will be within a fairly easy reach of the, the city, especially when you take into the fact that biking is very reliable when it comes to time reliability of travel. You don't have to worry too much about traffic snarls and things like that on bikes. So then bringing that regional context back into the city and understanding the underlying goals that were stated connecting neighborhoods, commercial areas, schools, neighborhoods, this is the proposed set of routes in the existing map. It builds on the routes that are there today. So it uses the WNOD trail, it uses Park, it uses Maple to an extent, but it shifted over to Little Falls based on some feedback that was received from City Council. And then the circumnavigation through the residential neighborhood is straightened out and rationalized a little bit. It's diverted quite a, to use the stream corridors and trips run and four-mile run. Those are corridors that were identified in the Parks Comprehensive Plan for Restoration and Ped Bike Access. It also moves the route a little bit to use signalized crossings to get people who are on bikes safely across Washington Street and Broad Street. Those are difficult crossings, so moving them to a light makes it easier to do. And then there are various other connections that make those, that make that access possible between neighborhoods. Facility types, the plan does not specify any specific facility types on any specific streets. That's left to the implementation process when a, when a fuller conversation can be done with the neighborhood, that people in the neighborhood are really the ones who have that local knowledge. And so before you really go out and plan for a facility, you want to be able to talk to them and figure out what are the needs in your community. For example, one of the things that came up at the open house is that Southwest Street is an important biking route, but it's also a barrier between residences, that people really want to have a way to, to get safely across West Street, not just travel along West Street. And that's something you only learn when you go out to the neighborhood and you ask them, you show them a plan and you say, "You know, this is what we're thinking about. Does this meet your needs or not? And what are your needs and how can we accommodate those?" So the facility types in here are here for example, they're here for information as an idea of what might happen. Charros, wayfinding signs, this is what exists on Park Avenue and Maple Avenue today. It can also be bike lanes, and I want to stress that bike lanes does not require the removal of on-street parking. Both of these examples show that on-street parking can be maintained on both sides of the streets. It's not an either or. It can be an everybody-wins situation. the streets, it's not an either-or, it can be an everybody-win situation. Intersection design, this is starting to crop up in U.S. cities as a key point for safety of people on bikes, that people are getting, and other communities are getting good at installing sherros and bike lanes, and buffered bike lanes, and every different kind of thing you can do in between the intersections, but the intersections themselves are where a little bit more activity goes on. And so there are ways to guide people through the intersection, provide safe places for staging, provide sort of warnings of weaving traffic and things like that. And then bike parking, so bike parking is important, you've got to have a safe place to leave your bike if you're going to ride it. And there are different kinds of bike parking. There can be outdoor bike parking, and it can include city branding, there can be covered bike parking, and then there can be interior secure parking. These are all different things that go within the different family of biking and bike parking, it depends on how long you're going to be there, what kind of use it is, what the visibility is on the nearby streets. And this plan doesn't speak to specific bike parking requirements, it throws these out as ideas, and then it acknowledges that as the city looks to update its automobile parking ordinance, that would be the appropriate time to also look at what's its bicycle parking ordinance and update those simultaneously. And then the last functional piece is bike-share corridors. The idea of using East Falls Church as a launching point, Arlington County's planning to get there with a station extension in calendar year 2017, so use that as a launching point to extend bike share into the city if that's a desire, using the corridors along North Washington Street, the W N O D Trail, in sort of the short term, using the Broad Street corridor to link those things together and eventually get to the West Falls Church Metro, and then using Roosevelt Boulevard slash Sycamore Street in Arlington County as seven corners begins to redevelop to provide another travel option for people living Implementation, as I said, a master plan's got to have a sort of, it's got to have a set of visions, it's got to have a stated set of goals, and then it's got to have a list of steps for how do you get from where you are to where you're going to go. The implementation strategy, both for the bike facilities and the bike shares, to be opportunity-driven on the, in terms of routes, look for other projects that are going on, look for grant funding opportunities, and as those present themselves, task staff with the responsibility to go out and draft up various options, go out and collect data, what's the street like, how's it being used today, what might make sense? And then go out and talk to the public about it, find out what is, how is the public using the street, how do these facilities meet their needs, how do they not? And then adjust those plans as appropriate based on feedback, and then bring it back to the city manager for decision. The idea here is that you allow city council and the boards and commissions to lay out the policy of, these are kinds of the facilities we want to use, these are the routes that we generally want to use within the city, yes, let's go out and talk to the neighborhood, but ultimately sort of leave the operations and day-to-day decisions to city staff. Similar thing in bike-share corridors, look for opportunities, whether that's private development projects, or grant funding opportunities, or maybe it's projects from outside the state or outside the region that are coming in and doing projects. For example, I-66 would be a great opportunity to look for a leverage point there, to make that connection to the community. Have staff come up with a couple of ways to implement those bike-share corridors, maybe you start with one corridor, maybe you start with two corridors, and then you get to filling in the gaps. Ultimately, this is going to need council approval, because either council's going to be approving the grant funding for the project, or they're going to be approving the project, so here you're going to have a bigger dollar issue, and so council's going to be involved in this, and then lean on staff to get the final station sign, because it goes 15 feet this way or 10 feet that way. So bringing it back to where I started, why a bike master plan? There's a growing demand for biking, and a lot of that is going unmet today with the facilities that exist. Biking is a good public policy choice because of the many benefits it has, and there's also an interest in getting this done quickly because of the regional context and the state efforts to plan bicycle facilities in the region. And with that, I'd like to turn it back to you all and hear what you have to say in terms of questions.
Mr. Dodd, thank you very much for the presentation. Are there any comments or questions from the Planning Commission? Ms. Teads?
And I just want to say, the plan is really well-done. I like the fact there's lots of maps and lots of graphics. There are just a couple of things that stood out for me. One, with the city bike routes, which are all in blue, I wonder if it would be better if we differentiated those as we do the ones in Arlington County and Fairfax, as being, most of them are on-street shared facility, so like you could have the dotted blue line. We only have a few that are off-street anyway, and most of, I don't think, we don't have any standalone bike corridors at this point, they're all sherros, but--
Except for the W N O D Trail, yes.
Yeah, well, the W N O D's kind of on its own, and it's green anyway. But I'm just saying, on the blues, it might make sense to make sure people understand that all of this is really on-street shared facility. There isn't, you know, because I've driven some, when I first lived here, we did one of the city bike routes, and we found out that really just meant there were signs saying, "Go this way," and didn't mean any particular value for the trip. But, and then we learned to just make our own routes, but, so we could get the place better. But my son and I were big bikers together for a long time. And then the other thing is, we do have a couple of bike trails that are off the road, one going through Crosman Park and one through Cavalier Trail Park. I spent a lot of time in those parks because we do habitat restoration events there, and there's a lot of bamboo and horrible things that we have to keep pulling out. I think that in those cases, we maybe have some other kind of symbol that says that this is a shared pedestrian bike route, because, I will say this, I work in Old Town Alexandria, I have been hit by bikes twice crossing the street at a crosswalk where bikes didn't stop at stop signs. And we mostly are concerned with bikes and cars, and in that case, we're worried about the car, the bikes, because the bikes, you know, there's no chance for a bike against a car. But I'm really, you know, I'm a little concerned when we say, because if you look at those trails in Crosman and in Cavalier Trail, they're not that wide, and I think that there at least needs to be some signage that says to people as they're entering those trails that they're shared with bikes, and that, you know, that maybe even a caution sign for bicyclists that there are pedestrians, because there's a lot of kids in those parks. And I've occasionally had bikers come through going a little bit too fast for going through like Cavalier Trail, there are some narrow areas there. So I just, you know, and I went through the report again up here while you were talking, because I'd done it once at home, and I thought, well, let me look at it again. I don't see anything in here that talks about how bikes and pedestrians relate.
(inaudible).
Yeah, and I think that, anyway, those two trails through the park, and I've biked on both of them, because when you bike with kids, it's really nice to bike through the parks, because there's no cars. But you really do have to be careful about people. And I think the other thing is, I see people biking on our sidewalks a lot, and any, you know, there should be some education opportunities about that, too, that we're really are trying to keep bikes where they're supposed to be in the streets, but we're trying to keep them safe from the cars. So there's a balance there. Anyway, so that's the only two things I wanted to comment on, that I thought the, our blue could be in a couple of different fashions, just like the green is, to really represent what those trails are, in that we really don't talk about pedestrians in here at all. And, you know, that's it.
May I follow up on that?
Absolutely, Ms. Akmer.
Yeah, I was really kind of concerned about that also, because we're always talking about the automobile and the bike, but with pedestrians sharing and everything, I think the one thing I did not see in here was a plan for having consistent signage, not wayfinding signage, but stop, look, listen, you know, don't run into, just, because some places it's cones, some places it's a stop sign that people ignore anyway. And I think that's rather concerning, and somehow even with information every once in a while on our bike, back, along our bike routes, just reminders of, you know, good be, I don't know what we've got on code either, as far as, you know, thou must wear a helmet and all that kind of stuff, so I don't know what laws we have covering or anything. But I am concerned about just the fact that the bikers roar through the stop signs, and that's breaking law, and that really bothers me. I also saw two bikers cross, pass a school bus on the, on the door side. I almost just blew my stack, I said, "Oh, my God, you know, what if a kid was getting off or something or other like that?" But, you know, so that was kind of a concern. And then I also really did like you saying bike classes, but, you know, that could be expanded to be done in the elementary school with our police department and everything like that. So I think the more we educate, you know, public and the kids on uses of bikes and rules of the road, it's all better for everybody else. But I love the research you did, and I love all the maps, and it's, you know, as usual, you do a dynamite presentation. Is this going to be part of the comp plan?
This will be incorporated by reference into the comp plan. The Mobility for All Modes is the actual comp plan chapter, but much like the small area plans will incorporate it by reference, so it'll be available, hopefully be able to go to a hot link and pull it up, but it's, so that's how it's, that's how we're dealing with that.
Yeah, I really, you know, it's a, it's a beautiful plan.
Same with the Bus Shelter Master Plan. The more detailed plans that supplement the broader chapter on Mobility for All Modes.
But I did see, you know, a lack of safety messages in it, of what we're going to do to try to make this the safest bike routes around, and that's what I meant by the signages and everything, some consistent, because right now, I don't think it is. Am I?
I'm not sure.
You're the ones out there riding. All I see, all I see are--
You're a never, no.
I'm a never, no way. I used to be somewhat, I used to ride down to Old Town. Easter.
Ms. Rankin?
I just have a quick question. I think it's probably a good idea, but what was the thinking behind moving the route from Maple over to Little Falls? And assuming this goes through, you know, we just put up signs and painted sherros on Maple, will we switch that around, or, mostly so I could tell my neighbors?
So the thinking on the route change, if I understood council members correctly, was that their thought was that Little Falls provides a more direct connection to the W N O D Trail. It also does a better job of bringing people directly into City Hall off the trail, which is a major destination, and there's still a potential to make that jog back over to Maple Avenue on Park. And also Little Falls, I shouldn't have jumped off it so quickly, Little Falls will also provide a direct connection to the 301 West Broad Development. It'll go directly into the front door of that Harris Theater and the residential apartments. So for that reason, Little Falls made sense as a sort of a connector there. In terms of how this thing would get implemented, the paint on the sherros isn't holding up as well as is expected, so might not have to scrub them off too hard, and it should be, this is the other nice thing about the sherros, is that they aren't that expensive, and those were funded off, out of the EDA's budget anyway. I think all the sherros and all the signs across the entire city were less than $16,000. And so that would be a fairly low-cost effort to move a couple of blocks of sherros.
Ms. Rogers?
There have been some comments. There have been several comments made by commissioners. Is, are these comments something that you would incorporate into this plan, or is this the plan that we have to recommend to city council, as is tonight?
So there's always opportunities to fold information into the plan. I think some of the big things that I've heard from the commission members tonight is, what is the connection between, what's the expected behavior between people on bikes and people who are walking? The, and I keep using that phrase, I want to make sure people aren't getting classified as either bikes or pedestrians, because people are people, they just happen to be traveling by different modes, and often people will train, change modes throughout the day. Sometimes I'm on a bus, sometimes I'm on the rail, sometimes I'm walking, sometimes I'm driving, sometimes I, I do all those things. So I just happen to be a person, and now I'm on a bike, or now I'm walking on foot. So some description about how those people are expected to behave themselves, so that everyone can sort of move about the city and enjoy a quality of life without being harassed or feel like they're threatened or endangered by other people who are moving about the city. So I think there's a need to add a section that speaks to expected behavior. How are people expected to ride on the sidewalk if that's where they feel most comfortable doing it? Maybe it's saying something like, "If you're going to bike on the sidewalk, you've got to bike at a walking speed." So will eliminate that danger of people sort of racing past others. And then on the trails, and maybe this comes to an idea of when you're going out and designing the trails, maybe you design the trails with crushed gravel instead of a paved surface to make sure that people can't reach that high speed. There does have to be a certain element of visibility and things like that, so you can see people coming around the curves, but you can do things with the design of the road, right? People have talked about traffic calming for automobiles for years, you can do the same thing for people who are on bikes, that you can design the trails, you can use different materials and different geometries to get the behavior you want. And part of that is that if you build it into the design of the infrastructure, instead of relying on designing, you get much better compliance. People tend to ignore signs, or they get too used to them, or they don't ignore them, or they say, "Oh, the sign didn't tell me to slow down, so I didn't." Instead, if it's just baked into the design, you get the behavior you want. So that will certainly be, that's certainly something we'll have to look at adding.
Okay, so, that gets back to my questions.
Yep.
Since I'm going to be doing the motion on this. I need to know, if, is the city council, they have a final vote for this on the end of June.
That's what's scheduled, yes.
If you're going to be making changes to this, is this something that then comes back to us?
What we've done in the past in the small area plans is incorporate those changes into the draft that will go to the council, and we'll certainly make that available to you.
We would not see it to be--
We can email those to you and make sure you have those. And we certainly are looking for commission support for this important project as it goes forward to the council.
I think, I think generally, we support this, it's just that it seems that there have been some suggestions made to make changes, and when these suggestions are made, it's always good to know that they've been added into a draft plan. So I would, I think my motion would be that we would like to, to see something come back to us from different suggestions that have been made by planning commissions, whether it's email, or, I don't know how you want to do this.
What we've tried--
But I don't want to say, "We think this is the best thing, and, and we don't want any changes," because that's not what we're saying.
I'll throw out, there are sort of two options you could go here, right? You could just adopt it as a blanket statement and say, "Yep, we trust that staff is going to fold those things in." The other thing you could do is you could amend the motion to say, you know, "We like the plan, we want it to go forward," recognizing that our approval is contingent on the following information being added.
Yeah, I think the, Ms. Rogers, you're making the motion as you mentioned, but since we got a lot of information just tonight at the dais, I think it's only appropriate that we have some sort of mention of that fact, and that we would like to be notified of any changes that are made, since we heard a lot of suggestions here, and it sounds like you understand those, and I think we're going to hear a few more from the public as well, that I want to make sure that those get incorporated into the actual motion.
Also, what we've tried to do in all these plans is try to keep track of the various additions and improvements that come from the various groups. For example, C A C T had suggestions last week at the presentation, some of those have been incorporated, so we can, we can keep a list of those changes that have been made as it's gone through the public review process, as we've done with small area plans.
Yeah, thanks. Ms. Rogers, do you have other questions other than the motion?
There have been several comments about biking and bikers and pedestrians on the path, and one of the things you say on page 12 is you provide separate paths and trails for people walking and biking on the W N O D Trail. Is that something that you're suggesting that City of Falls Church does, in the little section that goes through Falls Church? Or are you suggesting that this is something we're going to be asking the regional park authority to do?
It would be something that would be under the purview of the Northern Nova Parks, they've now called themselves, they've rebranded. So it would be on them, and they're already doing a, they've already engaged in a study that stretches from the overpass over Route 7 down to Columbia Pike in Arlington County to look at expanding the trail in some way. And so part of this, this was a repeated request of the C A C T to get this in there, and they wanted it worded this way, they didn't want just a wider trail, they wanted separate trails. And so the idea here, again, this is the context of making the city's wishes known so that when the regional efforts come in, our desire is on the books, and people know what we're expecting, and we can hold up the plan and say, "This is what we want, it's our community." So this would be something that the city would identify, and then in coordination with Nova Parks would make it happen. A similar thing was in Mobility for All Modes, when the city said, "We want a second entrance to the East Falls Church Metro." That doesn't mean the city is going to go out and build a metro station that someone else operates on someone else's land in someone else's jurisdiction, but it does mean the city's going to advocate for that and look for opportunities to make that happen.
And that's something that's actually doable? I mean, when I, I walk on the trail a lot, and there are some scary bikers on there, and I'm just wondering how you could separate it without giving more room to one or the other? I think that'd be a real challenge.
So the trail, I think, is not just-- So the trail, I think, is not just the trail. There's actually an entire park there. It's the Washington and Old Dominion Regional Railroad Park. The trail happens to run roughly down the middle of it. But that park is 100 feet wide, and it stretches for its entire 40-something mile length from Churlington into Purcellville. And so that 100-foot park going through the city is actually the largest park in the city by land area. So there's plenty of room. Right now, the trail is about eight feet wide, and eight feet out of 100, so a pretty small number. So there are, I think there's plenty of room in that right-of-way that Nova Parks owns to make a separate trail. And maybe it would be two eight-foot trails or two 10-foot trails or a 10-foot and an eight-foot trail. And then there would be markings on it. This is sort of a standard set of markings that are coming out. You could have the trail that would be regularly marked, this is the bicycle route versus this the pedestrian route.
You know, and I've talked with them about some other projects they were doing with Butterfly Gardens, but they, if you notice, they've gone to the trouble putting gravel pathways here and there so that people who are really uncomfortable on the trail itself can use the gravel pathways. So, and I know, I see a lot of people running off of the trail along the grass or the gravel.
My understanding, it says what the gravel's for, it's for the walkers. Is that not the understanding of the CACT?
The gravel was installed, I believe, for the comfort of the walkers. I think a lot of people don't like walking on the gravel trail. I know I don't like rocks in my shoes, so when I'm on the trail walking, I generally don't use the gravel trail.
It's there. Just need you.
No, I actually, are you...
Yes, I am.
I have a couple of quick comments myself. So as it's fairly well documented, this is an issue near and dear to my heart. And I spend a lot of time biking through the city and on the trails. So first of all, I want to commend you on the master plan here. It's very comprehensive and visually appealing. So thank you for all your hard work on that. I do have a couple of quick comments that I wanted to just ask you quickly. You've given, been given, you know, updates off of what we had previously, so pardon my figuring out which set of documents it was in.
I don't know when we get this done.
Yeah. On page 20 of 32, and I'm now talking about the original draft prior to tonight's submission, this is version 23 versus version 24. It just has a line that says, "Quick start mini grants, safe routes to school." It says, "The Virginia Department of Transportation makes available grants of up to $1,000 for bike racks, safety equipment." Is that number correct? Up to a thou, up to 1,000?
That's what I understand, is that this was, this small section in the plan here was done as a little bit of research just to get people thinking, what are ideas for advancing some of these things? And I think that's why it's called the Quick Start Mini Grant. At 1,000 bucks, that's probably enough money to buy maybe a half a dozen or so bike racks, the inverted U bike racks. So you could get parking for maybe 10 or 12 bikes. You could launch a helmet giveaway. You could hire an instructor to come in and train a class. The idea behind, there's a larger Safe Routes to the School program which the city has applied to in the past. Traditionally, those are thought of as sort of big-ticket infrastructure projects. My understanding is that this is some money that VDOT has held back so that if schools want to start on a slightly smaller scale and they just want to get some information and education out, this is the place to go. It's not intended to construct infrastructure, it's education and awareness.
Okay, the number does seem quite small to me, so I wanted to make sure that we were correct there. On page 15, I'm sorry, 16 of 32, same version, you talk about the membership costs of Bike Share. It is my personal preference that we don't include actual amounts. I think these fluctuate enough that in a master plan, it may not be appropriate, just that, you know, daily memberships carry a higher cost than a, than a annual membership is just enough of a statement, not the actual prices. And on the same page, under System Operations, Figure 12, it says, "Mr. Wright loads bikes on the rebalancing van." I was just curious, do we know this individual? Or is this just an employee or that's a...
He's our Viking mascot.
Everywhere else, we say employee or a typical person. I just, I thought that was a interesting...
That is a great catch. We can update that.
Okay. And on one, a couple of these circular maps, the circles are, look like they're not quite circles. They got some, I just, if it's going to...
They're a little bubbly.
Yeah, a little bubbly. If they're going to final, I'd just like to see those be more circular. These are, that's a very nitpicky thing.
Yeah, I mean, it's the, the reason they have the shape they do is because they are drawing the buffer distance around the city. And so as you, right, if you take a square and then you do a distance off of that, the corners start to get rounded. And so where you see the weird...
So you're doing it, I'm sorry, so you're doing it from the external boundary as opposed to a center point?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Another just comment about maps, since we are promoting in all of the developments that the Planning Commission is approving bicycle racks, and there seems to be a push to that, I thought it might be helpful to have a map of saying where the current bicycle rack locations are so that people could be informed of that information. I don't know that there's any listing of that, of that kind of data. And that's just a suggestion, certainly not a requirement. And then my last real comment was, you have in the updated version, the page, this is now version 24 of, version 24, I'm sorry, page 32 of 32, you have the CACT recommendation being what is essentially, other than the word CACT, the same motion that is before us. So if you're intending to put this into the master plan, are you going to list the same motion twice, but just which entity did it? I don't, I'm not sure how that's going to look.
Ultimately, it's done by City Council.
Right. No, I'm agreeing. So the CACT recommendation to me, and even the Planning Commission, I don't think I would be putting in the motion. I would just say, you know, they, they support it or, I mean, this is very detailed...
Reviewed and supported.
And you're going to repeat it again with the Planning Commission.
There are some, right, there are ways to handle the text. We could make it recommendations of the CACT and Planning Commission, and then we could just, if, if the Planning Commission ultimately makes the same motion word for word, then we can just write it once and then reference it twice.
That would be, that would be my, I agree with that suggestion. Are there any other comments from commissioners? If not, then I'd like to turn it over to the public. I have a speaker slip, once again, from Mr. Thurston to speak on the bike plan.
Thank you, Keith Thurston, 1015 Birch Street. You have a letter for you that was just sent to you today that has a number of issues and items on it. I've met with staff on it this afternoon. A lot of them are administrative in nature, and I'm sure will be adjusted away, but some of them are procedural in nature. So there's two large ones I'd like to point out. One of them is the, the issue of the major corridors through the city, and it's Broad, Washington versus Park, Maple, if you will, or Park, Little Falls. And the issue of Washington Street, especially North Washington Street and South Washington Street, we're just narrowing those lanes for the benefit of local development. And as is, especially on, if you think of around Tanner Hill and you think of the area around Jefferson Street or Columbia Street or North Washington Street, those are very busy corridors that probably it's best for the motorist and best for the bicycle that that not be the shared bikeway. That we're kind of tempting fate by designating that and bringing on something that could be rather dangerous for both motorists and bicyclists. And I think we'd be much better off to recommend both the Park Avenue and Little Falls or Maples, whatever the ultimate one becomes. And the second issue, which is laid out in A, B, and C as the recommendations at the top, are the issue of process and procedure. If this were a final detailed plan, then procedurally, you and the council could approve it, and it just goes on to the city for implementation. But a lot of these decisions on what style and method and which actual choice of path is chose becomes an issue of real public policy and concern, which I recommend come back through the Planning Commission and the council. So I think on the procedures part of it, which is in the back of the document there, those two charts, that that be modified to include Planning, CACT, Planning Commission, and Council final approval on those items. The others have to do with designations and consistency on the maps so that some of the existing Falls Church trails are highlighted, for instance, the Cherry Midvale Trail, and getting credit for the trails that are in place now where they're not designated. And I, in talking, I understand there's a difference, I think, an interesting perception. So if you think of this as a commuting bike plan, then you have one view of the world. But if you think of it as a neighborhood bike and walking, biking plan around the city, then you have a different perception of what bikes and trails are available. So I'm recommending that all of them be included, the existing trails be there so that they're all documented and for scorekeeping purposes in the jurisdictional area that those trails that do exist are recognized. And the other ones have to do with just a stylistic issue, and that is that the City of Falls Church is of equal importance as the City of Fairfax and Arlington County, and so should be recognized in our font and boldness on the maps. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thurston.
Thank you. Mr. Stoddard, oh, I'm sorry. May I ask another question?
You may, of course, ask another question.
Did you get a chance to look at this letter?
From VEPIS? Yes, I did.
Yes. And are there things in there that you think would be changed, made, changes made to the draft?
Yeah, I think...
Such as, I'm thinking particularly City of Falls Church, I mean, I think that's, that's important.
Yeah, that's easy enough to solve. That was an oversight in terms of the labeling of, often when we're drawing up a city plan, we don't label the City of Falls Church.
Right.
Because usually it takes up the whole thing. So when we zoomed it out, the reason City of Falls Church shows up here is because it's the label we added for the Activity Center. We just didn't catch adding a label for the city. We can add that to all the maps, that's not a problem. Some of the stickier points, the process piece is going to be a sticky point, and that's something that I'd like to hear from, from council, I think, in the next work session, that, who do they want to have? Do they want council to be in the position of making a decision about individual streets and segments of bike routes? Or do they want to leave that up to a city manager decision? So I'd like to leave that question up to City Council and see what they have to say about that, including the smaller streets, the paper streets, for example, the connection between Cherry and Midvale, that's not a problem, we can add those in. The bikes on Broad and Washington, I think that's going to be a tough one, that if you look at the designated routes, it doesn't call for, for providing bike routes along Broad and Washington, it's only when Bike Share shows up. And the reason for that is that Bike Share works best when it's on the major corridors, when it's highly visible to the locations and the destinations. I think it's going to be, if the city wants a Bike Share system, it's going to be hard to implement it if the Bike Share isn't located on the major corridors. I think people asking to walk one or two blocks before they can even start their trip by a bike is going to be a tough thing to ask. So we'll have to see how that plays out, and it would be great to hear the, how, where the Planning Commission feels about that.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that they couldn't start their trip on Washington Street if they wanted to. I mean, they wouldn't have to walk to a specific bike area, would they?
Well, that's a question of where do you locate the stations? I know in Alexandria, even though there aren't designated bike facilities on King Street, that's where they've put the stations because that's where people want to end and start their trips. And so that's generally where you end up with people biking, that generally people want to be where the action is, that that's where people want to travel, that's where they want to walk, that's where they want to bike, it's where they want to drive. And so the idea is to identify these corridors as that's probably where the stations are going to be sited, but maybe people are going to choose to travel along the minor streets along the side.
It might be, for example, let's say 301 Broad, if there were a Bike Share station there, someone might start there with the Bike Share station, spend some time on Broad or possibly take Little Falls and go up to Park or go up to the Dominion OD, but then have access to that facility. So I think the point being that if we show these as corridors where these stations might be located, and then people make their choices to have best to travel from there to wherever they're going.
Right.
But you want visibility and you want usage. So there certainly will be some stations, if we have them, that will be on these main facilities.
Yeah, I tend to agree, it would be really scary biking on Broad or North Washington. And, and near my office, there's a big Bike Share right at Eastern Market Metro. It's, it's one of the biggest ones I've seen. And I never see people come, come out of that area and go down Pennsylvania Avenue. They always head back into the neighborhoods.
Yeah, I think, I think it makes, it'll make sense to have them located there, but hopefully we would pick them in key spots where it's easy to drop back onto those other routes. Because, I mean, even for experienced bicyclists, those busy streets are going to be scary, and you put people that are just casually using Bike Share out there, it's going to be a mess. But I do, I do see that you probably have to locate them on those roads to get usage, but hopefully it'd be pretty obvious how they would, especially on Broad, it's so easy to drop back on Park.
There's all sorts of places where we're going to have bus shelters and bus stops, so people who are going from one mode to another, it's another way to do that. Again, people can choose to go to the next intersection and go north or south, or east or west. So we also would hope to have some of these larger, newer facilities sponsoring and helping to pay for the Bike Share stations or provide locations for them. And many of those locations will be on Broad or Washington Street. So it's, again, it's, it's a question of visibility, it's, those may be good locations for them. We need to do a study really, a feasibility study of Bike Shares, there'll be more work done in terms of placement.
If I may, on the part A of this letter, we just received this, this evening, this dated today, there is some mention that, it says additionally, there's no mention here of the Intermodal Transit Center. And this goes to what we're just speaking about, where we're putting Bike Share, and I think that is a good suggestion that on these maps, since that's going to be a focal point of changing between modes, that that would be something that would be highlighted in the plan somewhere. I'm sorry.
And it's not included in the plan so far?
No.
In the Intermodal Plaza itself, which is concerned. There was one other thing I just thought about, you know, we have our plan for the bus shelters, and in here, you said we don't have a common bike rack. Now, that sounds picky, 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 but you know, if you want to put, I did, saw, I saw that Vienna puts her, you know, we'd have Little City on a bank, a bike rack, and shouldn't they all be something that Russ likes?
I'm not sure on the... I will say, in terms of the bus shelters, those will be branded on, remember, it's the gable-style roof, and one side will have the city seal, the other one will have the Little City logo. So the bus shelters will be branded.
Yeah, well, right, but you know, even, even in some of our plans, when we get to the bike part of it, you know, we've had questions about bike racks.
Oh, they varied quite widely.
You know, they vary, yeah, they are different all over, but again, everybody...
We are showing in the illustrations on the bus shelter master plan a standardized U-shaped, I believe, system.
I was just bringing that up because it wasn't really, it was kind of brushed over, and we said, we don't have a, a common bike rack.
So there's, right, so you've got the West Broad Street Streetscape Plan that calls for sort of the older-style ribbon rack. What's in the bus stop master plan, remember, the bus stop master plan extends not only along Broad but also along Washington and East Broad as well. What's called for there is a more modern inverted U rack. Those have been, those have sort of come to favor now because they, bikes are less likely to fall over, they're a little easier to lock up to, they don't do damage to the bikes when things get interlocked and intertwined. Now, that's what's called for next to the bus shelters, but in terms of coming up with a citywide standard, something that could include branding and those other sort of artistic elements that can be added to bike racks now that maybe weren't so easy to do before, that's why the plan calls out and says, as you're updating your parking standards, you should look at your bike parking standards as well.
And this is not a funding mechanism either, there, you know, there aren't funds set aside to do projects. This is a Broad Master Plan trying to link us to the region and have a logical, logical system within the city. So it, it doesn't have every detail at this point.
Well, also, possibly when we start working on this updated Streetscape, a bicycle rack would be included in that. And, and I'm sure that as far as the VEPIS recommendations about... And I'm sure that as far as the Vipas recommendations about the process, I'm sure that Mr. Thurston and Vipas will follow up with this at the work session, or, and also speaking to City Council, so we'll, we'll know what they decide later.
Are there any other comments from the public regarding the bicycle master plan?
Before the Commission acts, I would like to commend Mr. Stoddard for his work, and also call out the work of Heather Scharfert, our intern, who has finished her work here in the city. They did great teamwork. This was added to their work plan, and as a very fast project, they've done an excellent job doing it. I've been to a number of meetings where presentations have been made, so I just wanted to call out that excellent work and teamwork. Again, this is totally a staff-driven thing, staff work. I think the quality of the work, their work and their interaction with the public has been outstanding, and I wanted to make sure the Commission was aware of Paul's work and our intern Heather Scharfert's work on this.
Yes.
Many of you saw Heather, she had presented on the Park Avenue Streets.
Yes, she came.
Yep. She was responsible for a lot of the GIS work in this plan, she did a lot of the research in this plan. Other folks who helped out, Garrison Kitt, who you may know from the small-area planning process, he did a lot of the background research on the benefits of biking, he did a lot of the sort of early drafting of the plan. And Lauren Bruce also played a role in this. He was setting up a lot of the meetings when we came up with some of these suggestions at the staff level. We reached out to Arlington County and the City of Alexandria, who have been rolling out their bike plans and are a little bit further along than the city is. But they said they've gone through the same sort of conversations and discussions about where do you start your bike plan? You start small, you see where it works, you see what the city likes, what they want more of, what they don't like, what they want less of. And so it's an iterative process, and that's the idea. For some people, this may be a step too far. For other people, it may not be far enough. But I think the idea is you find something that sort of works and promotes safety and provides people travel options.
Well, we do appreciate.
Absolutely. I want to say that how much I appreciate it.
How long have you been working on this? I know we've seen many iterations.
We started on this effort, well, we started committing regular staff hours to it in February of this year. We often have sort of popcorn idea sessions randomly throughout weeks and months, and so we'll talk about things, and things will be sort of on the back burner. So sometimes things aren't entirely new ideas when they come up, but it's regular.
I thought, I thought maybe you'd been working on this for years.
Oh, no. We marked very long.
This was very, much of this was really spurred by Fairfax finishing their plan, and then knowing that Arlington had been tweaking theirs, and then the regional plan, which we certainly didn't want to be a blank spot in the regional plan. So we'd always known it was an important component to follow up to the broader Mobility for All Modes Plan, but this has been done in a very quick but highly professional manner. I'm very proud of the group that's been working on it, and we've had great feedback from the boards and commissions as well, a lot of really good ideas that are being incorporated from one meeting to the next. So it's been a group process, and very proud of the work that's been done by the staff and the community.
And it shows. So thank you again. If there are no further comments or questions from the public, I'm going to close this issue for public comment, and I will entertain a motion on the bicycle master plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to kind of...
This is a complicated one.
Yes, well, I'm just going to, to more or less compress this, all these wherestes. The motion is, whereas the City's Mobility for All Modes Plan, the Transportation Chapter of the City's Comprehensive Plan establishes a vision to provide for the safe movement of people and goods within and through the city via a transportation network, offers choices in travel mode, supports economic activity, is sensitive to the environment, and provides equitable access for all residents, workers, and visitors. Therefore, I move that the Planning Commission of the City of Falls Church recommends the City Council adopt the Bicycle Facility's Master Plan connecting communities as a policy guide and incorporate it by reference in the City's Comp Plan, recognizing that suggested changes have been made by Planning Commissioners, and they will be added to the draft, and after they're added, they will be recirculated to the Planning Commission.
Do I have a second?
For further comment.
Oh, I'm...
Oh, I'll second it.
Are there any other further discussion regarding this motion?
I just have a question on the last two words of your comment. Was it for further comment, or was it for confirmation that they've been included in the plan?
I said for further comment.
Okay.
But I, okay, if you don't mind, I would like to say further comment.
Okay.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we approve the bicycle master plan. If there is no further discussion, Ms. G, can you call the roll?
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
And Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to request that, since the City Council has a work session on this coming up before their final vote, sometime in June, I've forgotten the date, that it would be good if Planning Commissioners attended that work session, particularly you being a, what's the first category of bikers?
Fearless.
Fearless and...
Fearless.
And strong.
Fearless.
As a fearless and strong biker.
Fearless is strong.
We expect you to follow up on this.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Presently, that's set for Monday, June 15th, that work session.
All right, thank you. That motion passed unanimously. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is other business. There is no other business on the agenda. So let's move to the item number eight, approval of the May 4, 2015 minutes.
I have this one typo, just on line 18, Mr. Wodisca, I think that nine's supposed to be an ampersand or whatever.
Parenthesis.
I was trying to think, what is it?
I would fail grammar now.
Oh, that nine?
I saw that as wrong.
Yeah, it should be a prophecy.
Yeah.
That's cute, though.
Are there any other comments?
No, no others. I'm making tech jokes over here.
I had a comment about 67. Oh, Mrs. Hockenberry asked if we had been given an announcement about the topping-out ceremony, and I wondered if you had in fact heard about that event since this...
No, is there a time?
There's no problem with the meeting minutes, I just wanted to follow up and see if you had been notified of that, because I have not. I didn't know if you had seen it.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't heard anything about the time.
It's going to be May 22nd.
Okay.
And they are working out the details of it in terms of where it's going to be. I believe it's going to be on the first floor.
How about the time? Do you have any idea?
I'll give you that in a second. We want to make sure it's safe to go in there, so we're taking on that with our building official. If you'll give me a minute, I'll give you that in my report, if that's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Can I get a motion then to adopt the meeting minutes with the one typo on line 18?
I saw move.
For May 4, 2015. It has been both moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And I believe there are no abstentions. The motion carries. Any Planning Commission reports?
Actually, I have a question for the planning directors, which I can do during the directors' report.
Yeah, let's wait till the next item.
I guess I have one quick thing. I did go to the ribbon kind of for our preschool the other day, and...
Yeah, that was fun.
Oh, yeah, it was fun, and the building looked really good inside out and seemed to be functioning well. And, although it's funny, a lot of the classrooms still look the same as when they were Easter sales. There's like, there's only so much you can do with center block walls. You just can paint them. But anyway, it was a nice ceremony, and the teachers all seemed really, really happy, especially after some of the disastrous trailer life, living they had to do, and some of the trailers going bad on them.
Yeah. Of course, I've gone to all kinds of meetings, but very briefly, EDA talked about Mason Row, had another presentation for the developers. Housing Commission is going to, is still concerned about the ADUs at Mason Row, and they are, we are going to be having a tenant, planning, a tenant meeting for the Broad Falls. Tenant said we're having some problems there, and it's going to be held at St. James sometime in the next couple of weeks. And the CASA, Mi CASA, Su CASA, that they've formed an alliance with, with the, over at Winter Hill, they're going to be going around and talking to people. They come, they speak three different languages, so they will be going door-to-door to talk with people at the, so that's, that's quite good. The only other thing I just really want to say, it's, it's a great time for us to see it, back-to-back examples of a stick-built, a steel-built buildings, with Harris Teeter being steel because of the height, and, and then stick-built at Tinner Hill. And, you know, maybe for one more floor, it looks like a lot nicer for, with steel-built, you know? It's really, and it seems to have gone up faster, too.
Yes, more expensive.
Yeah, it's more expensive to the developer, but, yeah, it's, it's an interesting observation.
Lyndi, I have a question about the EDA meeting. You said that they had had another presentation on the Mason Row. Were there changes to that from what we had, or...
There were, there were questions primarily about design.
So it was the same presentation as we got?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it was slightly different because they didn't bring their PowerPoint.
Oh.
So they were going over a paper list and stuff like that, but, yeah. But it was mainly about the design and the layout in some cases, but mostly about design.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Planning Commission reports? All right. Mr. Snyder, can you give us the Commission overview of the April 2015 Planning Directors' report?
Yes, wanted to call your attention to several items. We have, I think, mentioned to you in the past, the East Sales Project, and it's a nomination for Outstanding Institutional Project by the Urban Land Institute. And in fact, it did win that, that recognition, one of six finalists that became, that were winners. And the trophy, or the award actually, is down here on the table. Invite you all to lift it, it's quite heavy. And the competition, the other projects, many significant projects throughout the region, this was the most modest, but I think recognized for, for the contribution it made to the city and the difficulty of turning a building from a warehouse into a facility for small children. So we're very happy about that and pleased, and that was somewhat of a, that was a surprise, but a nice one. Also, you've been noting the progress being made on the various projects, the 301 Broad and Tinner Hill, those are going forward. We've spent a lot of time on the schools RFP, we'll continue to do more of that. We have brought on a new transportation planner, Jeff Sykes, who's now onboard, working with Paul Stoddard, and I think is going to give us more capacity, both in the transportation side and also for you, Mr. Stoddard, to do additional planning type of work, which he's been very good at, but his timing, time has been very limited. We're beginning work to put out an announcement for the additional person building safety to provide plan review and engineering review for, for complex plans that'll come through the system. So it's, it's been, been, and continues to be a busy, a busy month in April, and that's proving the same in May. Wanted to mention Lauren Bruce was studying for the AICP recognition and passed that certification, so he'll now be AICP certified, and that's a big deal for planners, so I wanted to congratulate him on that. And Paul Stoddard has been promoted to Principal Planner, so he'll be providing supervision for the transportation effort. And there's a broader, an important portfolio there that, that promotion recognizes, in addition to managing other people and working on a multitude of different projects. So those are some of the highlights of the, of the month. For those of you who were at Bike to Work Day, a big effort by lots of folks, including Deborah G., who was there early and did a lot of preparation in advance. Also, Ms. G. was at Civil War Days over the weekend, so in addition to her other work, she's been volunteering on behalf of the city. There were a lot of people at Bike to Work Day in the morning, a lot of people in the afternoon. It was a very successful event. So I, a lot of work goes into that by lots of different people, Public Works, police, Parks and Rec, very nice, very nice event. Any of you get a chance to go out there? Bike to work? Well, we're Civil War, so.
Bike to work.
And of course, people will be preparing for the Memorial Day event as well, some of our staff, as well.
I unfortunately did not. I have in years past, but it is such a difficult route to get to work. It's, it's...
That's all right.
Bike Kinetic was out in force, and they made it a lot of fun.
I really had wanted to, though. I commend the efforts of all those who were there.
You could have biked to the metro at least.
Shame on me.
We are expecting some, some changes to, some additional plans, some changes to the Mason Row plans. We haven't seen those yet, but responses to some of the things they heard from Planning Commission and others about Park Avenue, so we'll let you know when we see those. And in terms of the, the topping-out party is going to be Friday. I have not seen a time, I've got a picture that they sent to our building official of where it's going to be. We'll send you the formal time. Looks like they're going to have food. We want to make sure they have appropriate handrails and it's a safe place to be. It's going to be on the first floor.
Will they give us hard hats?
I'm sorry?
Will they give us hard hats?
I don't know. But there's been a lot of correspondence back and forth today, specifically on making sure that the space is right, you know, how are they going to heat food, you know, those kinds of things. So we pay attention to all of these things, and...
Are there any questions for Mr. Snyder?
I have two. And then, I guess, yes, Bruce has one. So I was kind of...
Oh, I did want to mention.
Yeah.
Schools.
I was going to bring...
We have asked, we've communicated with Superintendent Jones, and have asked Lauren, who's done a lot of work with schools, and Ms. G., to coordinate a best time to sit down and make a presentation to this body about where are we with Mount Daniel, what's the latest. Superintendent's very happy and willing to do it, it's just finding time on our collective calendars to get that done.
Yeah, that was the question I was going to ask. I did email it to you earlier to give you...
Yeah, and we've been, we're working on it.
Fair warning.
We don't have it set yet, but we're, it's a work in progress.
But I am a little, I am concerned about it, because on the morning announcements, they're talking about breaking ground for construction, the school ends, it looks like, this summer. And I went back through the departmental monthly reports a few months that I had, and it doesn't seem like you guys have staff involved. Now, I know the site plan goes through Fairfax County, but this is city-owned land, and in the past, like with MEH, when it wasn't city-owned land, we were given multiple updates. And there's also, I believe, state code that says if it's property owned by the city, that we have to do some kind of formal review, not, not a site plan, but some type of review of something built on land that we own. So it, it just concerns me, if they're going to do construction, that's June 19th, it's the last day of school. If they're seriously going to break ground, I guess that's what, the June 22nd? And we haven't seen anything? And does it, as far as I can tell, you guys don't seem to be involved in it either?
We're, Lauren Bruce has been monitoring, you know, the school's activity. We, most of our time, the school's been spent on the RFP issues in high school.
Right, and I understand that, that's a big issue.
We can check where they actually are with Fairfax County. I've not heard that there are permits ready to go at this point.
Really? Okay, so they...
We can research that, though, because we have contacts over there.
And I thought that that might have been a PR statement, that really what they meant is that they would be moving all their stuff out into the trailers and getting it ready, but that ground probably wouldn't be broken on June 22nd. But I still, I just... But I still, I just want to put it firmly out there, I'm glad that you've asked the superintendent, but I do believe that the staff, you guys should know where they are and have some purview of what's happening, and we definitely should know where they are and have some purview. And I don't, I went back and looked through some council agendas, it doesn't, at least not in a public meeting, it hasn't been discussed in the council. And so this is what concerns me. If the site plan's done through Fairfax County, any type of public meeting would be done at Fairfax County, not in front of us or the council, where people can watch it on TV or see it recorded. And so it, to me, it goes against everything the city believes in, not to have some type of public, at least one or two presentations. Because we, we have this history of underbuilding what we do add on to the schools, leading to problems in the future. And I would say TJ's a good example of that. That addition was open one year, and now half of the fifth grade is in trailers. That addition was put on for the fifth grade, and you go there now, one year later, then half of the fifth grade is in trailers, and, which I don't understand, they have the largest kids in the smallest rooms now, that the school has available. It's, it's shocking to see those little, these large kids in this little room, they really should have put second grade out there, but that's a personal, you know, my personal feeling. But anyway, I just, anyway, I just want to, if, if, if the staff is having trouble getting information, I, I just want to say, from my point of view, they should be giving you information regularly. We should be having regular public meetings.
Well, we're, we're going to arrange a presentation, we'll have to figure out the best time, but Superintendent was very forthcoming about her interest in...
And I, I hope it would be the, the public part of our meeting.
Yeah.
So it's recorded.
Absolutely.
And, and we make sure people know.
I think we had something similar last year, just as a preview of, you know, that we, in advance of the vote on the referendum and that kind of thing.
Yeah, I think, wasn't that a work session?
It'll be on, we'll have it on camera, so it's...
Yeah, I would just like this to have something on camera, I just think it makes a lot of sense, and... Right, that's, sorry, thank you for giving me the section number, I knew there was a section. We do have to do some formal action. And so I just, I don't see how, I don't want to be, have a meeting and have a bunch of stuff shoved at me and said, here, do this formal action, because we got, we're on deadline and we're going to be late. I'd rather just have it go smoothly, and that, that's for the staff as well, because it's, you're going to have to walk us through the motion, and what you see on the plans, and I just think that's just not right.
And it should be on camera, so that we can have people from the public commenting.
Right, we want them to comment, this is public funds, and, you know, I know the referendum passed, but that doesn't mean it's a blanket, do what you need to with that money.
Right.
So, anyway, I, I thank you for looking into it before tonight, because, and that's why I sent you the email, I didn't want to just hit you out of the blue.
No, we're, it's, it's a good time to get caught up speed in terms of where the process is, what the timetable is, and, you know, we, we are nearing the end of the school year, so.
Right.
It's a good time, it's a good time to do that.
And like I said, I kind of thought it was a PR statement, that they were going to be ready to go, because, like I said, I looked through all this stuff and didn't see anything. My second issue is, and I know that not all this stuff that was in the news press about the Hitt property is correct, or it's basically, you know, you can't say what it is, but I am concerned, you know, that, that Hitt has bought the white building on the corner of Broad in Washington, Applebee's, and the brick building that's mostly been professional medical office, right? And, and what, what is leaking out from these closed sessions is that they're looking at mixed use. And as you know, the land use map for that is currently business and transitional, the future land use map for that is business and transitional. While I'm not one of those people who's against mixed use, per se, and I think that some of the mixed use we put in the city has been very valuable, I think, but I think there's a limit to it, when we have a piece of property that is all commercial now, and we have mixed use that's gone in, and that, you know, in our area plan for that, we have that continuing to be commercial. So I'm just wondering, as, as Hitt comes in and talks to the staff, they're, I'm assuming they're aware that our preferred, you know, goal there is to remain commercial there?
Well, we were, we have not had, we've not seen any detailed plans at all. That frontage was shown on the small area plan as an area for redevelopment. That particular, because of its frontage on Broad Street.
Right, right.
And then the other piece that was talked about in a general way was the need for additional parking throughout the downtown, and trying to leverage and use the city parking lot as a place to do some kind of a structure, so. But those are general, so we haven't seen plans yet.
Right.
And...
I guess I just want to put it out there, I mean, what's leaked out is the Whole Foods retail, retail frontage like we want, and it would be great if we can do a private-public garage thing, but it also came out that it was going, you know, their preferred thing is a mixed-use building with 300 apartments, and, and again, I'm not against...
We've not seen a plan, nothing's been submitted, so...
That's hard to say, I know.
We have made no comments on any of the, the details of that, some of that is just speculation, I believe, on part of the newspapers.
I think it is speculation. And that's part of what I wanted you to say, the staff hasn't seen it, hasn't commented, because I was getting lots of citizens coming up to me and going, what's the staff doing? Why are they letting them do this? And the staff, from what I could tell, the staff hasn't been involved in this at all, it's all just been...
There had been no submissions at this point, there is interest, I think, in the parking lot.
Right.
It's a key component of development of that block, which was identified in the small area plan as, it was an asset we had that could be key to the, to the block in terms of providing general parking, because we have very limited parking for a number of uses, like State Theater and some of the restaurants, which are very successful, but have no parking of their own, so.
Well, I just wanted to make it public, that, that there's been, nothing submitted to the staff, so the staff hasn't agreed, or suggested, or thought, but I guess the other thing is, I guess, is the next steps we could expect in the future is for this to be presented at the Economic Development Committee's meeting, or, I mean...
Well, I would, I, I believe it's with council in terms of these decisions about...
Really? Okay. I mean, I just wanted, you, you expect that to happen, because I think if people were interested, they should be watching out for the announcements for the EDC meetings.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes, I, I have a question about something that's going on in North Van Buren. I've brought this up before, and it has to do with property that was subdivided, and, and in sub, substandard lots, and now they've been built on. And it seems that one of the lots is landscaping, the paper street that's next to it. And my concern is that, that how long does it, this have to go on before they can claim this property?
They have no right to the property at all. One thing I will mention, we, on our list of things to do, is, as a follow-up item, is to bring forward, this is kind of a cleanup issue, but these paper streets, which are basically blank on the plan.
Right.
And make them green.
Right.
It's, it's not more detailed than that, but there are a lot of them, and we'd like to, we'd like to, I think that sends the public message. And so I've talked with Mr. Stoddard and also Mr. Kidd about bringing that forward as a follow-up to the Parks Plan. It's, again, it's a small cleanup item, doesn't say exactly what's going to happen in those areas, but property owner has no right to that public land, and I think part of that, as we go through that, is to make it clear that we're retaining ownership in our interests, we don't plan to put a street there, but we retain ownership and interest in all of these unopened rights of ways. And there are, there, the more you look at the map, you find there are quite a few of these small ones.
Yeah, but...
Right, but I've never seen anybody landscaping them.
Yeah, well, this, I think that's important.
I think so, too.
I've also seen people try to block them.
I mean, I mean, it's, it certainly looks nicer, it's cleaned up, and it's got plantings and mulching and, and all kinds of stuff, but it, it, it just seems to me, this is a, a city property, and a property owner should not be doing that, even if they're getting ready to sell the property...
They should be told.
And they want it to look better, I, I just, it makes me uneasy.
They should be told upfront.
Yeah.
And not to wait for us to deal with paper streets.
I'd like to make sure that this gets on our schedule sooner rather than later.
Well, and one of the things that you, you may want to consider is, you know, in a lot of cases, people will mow grass, or do, you know, adopt adjoining property, just keep it maintained, and that's not uncommon practice in various places. But there are, you, you certainly want to make sure that people understand that by doing that, and by volunteering that, you're not, you have no claim on the property. And I think, you know, that's...
But, yeah.
I think the problem is, is if they landscape it in such a way as it seems like part of their yard, the public no longer feels like that's property that they can be on. And we've had this happen with the property that's off the bike trail on Pennsylvania, who has deliberately blocked the, the paper street, the Cedar Lane Paper Street, that people from the neighborhood use to get to the bike trail. And, and so here we are, while it is public, and he knows it's public, that, that landowner's determined that he doesn't want people using it, and we've had that trouble with the paper street at the end of Villa Ridge, which my kids used to get into that neighborhood. And, you know, we've had, not currently, we, we've had landowners in the past block it, even though they know they don't own the property. So I think that what Ms. Rogers is saying, it's someone perhaps needs to send a letter to that landowner and make sure that they do not continue to improve properties that's not their own. And, and like I said, if, if it makes it look like it's part of their yard, then you won't feel like you can walk there. But now I want to go...
But I would like to get the commission's, sense of the commission as to whether you'd like, this thing I've talked about, to bring this forward as a follow-up item to the Parks, to the, the Parks Plan.
I think we all agree that we would like to do...
That would be a good, that'll be a good forum for discussing a number of these, because there, there are a number, there are many of these situations that are similar, they have nuances that are somewhat different, but I'd, I'd be very happy to try to work towards bringing that to the commission sometime this year for a formal action.
I'd love to see, yeah, I'd love to see us do it, and we've talked about it before, and we've always agreed we want to do it. I also think that maybe...
We'll bring you forward in a work session.
Part of that is, when we do that change and make it into parkland, that we send formal letters to all the adjacent landowners to remind them that they are back in or beside public property, and that, well, you know, we have the same thing going on in Cherry with that construction, half the time you can't use that paper street, that, that, it's being used as a construction zone, it's, I've had seen construction materials there, I've seen multiple cars. It's full of gravel right now, I don't know. So, I mean, we have this problem all again, and I think it doesn't hurt to remind people that, you know, we have new landowners next to the Villa Ridge, well, I don't know, they, they have seemed to leave it alone, but I don't even know if they know that's a public street right away, I don't know.
Yeah, it worries me, though, thinking in terms of bringing this forward within the year. If they are landscaping that, and then we go in and say, uh-uh, you know, about six months later, they said, they'd be perfectly good to say, well, you didn't tell us. And, and I think that's...
This is more about, this is, we have, I'd like, what I'm getting at is, I think it's important for us to get a land use designation on these properties, and then, and then we can talk about how they're used, and how neighbors deal with them, and I think it's a good forum for doing that.
I, I think that's all well and good, but in this case, if they're putting any money into it, it's going to backfire. When we go around saying, oh, in a year or so, but that's, you can't do that. And that would not go over too well. That'd stir up a big fight. I think it'd be better to say, hey, you know, this is city land. It, I just don't see any sense, why not?
Okay, thank you.
And if, I've got a couple things.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, okay, I want to follow up on Melissa's comments about this, about Daniel's school. It really worries me that we're building a brand-new, huge addition to the school, and it's all going through Fairfax County, and yet we will not have any say or any information on materials. And I really worry that it will be value-engineered, much as we have done with every other darn develop, improvement in the school, that runs, gets run down really, really fast. But it bothers me that the public money is being spent, and there is no public access or no public hearing for people to hear what's going on. And, and, and of course, I, I, you're talking about one area, and I'm talking about the others, the materials and things. I think that this, the City Planning Commission should have as much say over who, materials going into a, a building that is being paid for out of, you know, city funds. And I don't like the idea that it only goes through Fairfax County, probably don't give a darn.
Well, I, I think we can ask these questions best when we have the superintendent here.
Yeah, well, I'm just following up on that. My only other question is, well, it's a combined question. I thought at the last meeting, we spoke about having an extra meeting on the Mason Row, so it wouldn't be all in one night. And then, yet, I'm looking at this agenda for Monday, June 1st, you've got the combined work session, then you've got the commission, commission meeting, we've got planning commission meeting on Mason Row, and then tacked on to it is Greenway Downs. That is a killer of an agenda.
We have, you know, I've talked with the city manager about Greenway Downs, and...
That's a killer.
That is, that is scheduled in the two-year council work plan for next year, so we are, we had a meeting last week with him about, about this, and I don't think we're going to be taking it up at this time, given everything else that's going on.
What, the Greenway Downs?
Yes.
Okay, but still...
It's work that needs to be done, but it's scheduled for 2016, so that's something that would be coming up. And I believe there has been agreement that, discussions with Mr. Meeks, that while there would be a public hearing, the, the planning commission would have a separate night to actually make decision. That's my understanding.
Because we were very strong on that.
Yes, be handled.
That we wanted the extra meeting, and we could not make a decision on that night for recommending...
That's, my understanding is, that's the intent of the commission, and Mr. Fuller, and, and we've talked about that with Mr. Meeks.
So we won't be taking a vote that, on June 1st?
Of course, your decision to do, you can change your mind at the meeting, but that's my understanding of the intent of the commission, and we were, we were assuming that that's how it would go.
Ah, yeah, that's my understanding.
You would hold the hearing, have full discussion, and then hold over the actual vote for another meeting.
That is my understanding as well.
Consistent with where the commission was? Okay.
Yeah, so just to be clear, then on, on Monday, the June 1st, we're going to be doing the joint session, and then the public hearing on Mason Row, and not doing the Greenway Downs item. And the public hearing will be set, the, the public can voice their comments, but we will not be taking a vote till further, till a later point in the month.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's my understanding, if there's any change, we'll, we'll be sure to let you know, but...
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Snyder? All right, I will consider a motion to adjourn?
Oh, no. I'm moving to adjourn.
Do I have a second? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing no, opposed, meetings adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.